Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. Welcome to our Roseville City Council meeting of April 16th, 2025. I'd like to ask the clerk to please read the rule.
Thank you. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Haldishell.
Here.
Councilmember Madonza.
Here.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Here.
And Mayor Beresconi.
Here. Thank you. I'd like to request Placer County Senior Chaplain Lance Dustin to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Could you please join me? As Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to ask our clerk to please announce the meeting procedures.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Roseville City Council meeting. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table to your right or online on our city's website. All comments from the public should be directed to the City Council and not to any staff member or the audience. All speakers must speak from the podium as this meeting is being recorded tonight. Members of the public may address the City Council regarding any item that is not listed on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Public comment is limited to 25 minutes, and each speaker will have three minutes. If the time limitation is reached in this very first segment, individuals will have a second opportunity to make public comment at the end of the meeting just prior to council comments. The Brown Act does prohibit our City Council from discussing, debating, or taking action on items that are not listed on the agenda tonight. The Brown Act also allows for public comment on all items that are listed on tonight's agenda. Speakers will have five minutes to provide input that should be relevant to the item that is listed. Time will be monitored, and once the red light begins to blink at the podium, we request that the speaker please conclude their comments. The City Council encourages public participation and requests that you please be courteous during the meeting. Lastly, if addressing the City Council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. With that, welcome to the City of Roseville.
Thank you, Carmen. We have two presentations tonight. The first one will start with Placer County Law Enforcement Chaplaincy Program presentation. We have Lance Dustin, who would like to share about the program.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Councilmembers, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present our chaplaincy with you all. I've been a law enforcement chaplain volunteer for a little over 26 years. In the midst of that, I have an 18-year career in law enforcement and recently retired. Can we advance the slide? One more. So our agency was established in 1979 at the request of Sheriff Don Noons. We can just roll through that, sir. We incorporated as a 501(c)(3) in 1986. We've been around, this year makes 46 years of service. One of the unique things about us recently is that we were a very integral part during COVID. We did not shut down. We actually doubled our time and what we were doing. Our agency is a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week, 365 days, 365 days a year operation. We have somebody on call the entire time. Next slide. Our mission statement is that we provide spiritual, emotional, and mental support to our law enforcement community, their families, and the citizens of Placer County. Next slide. As we sit right now, we're 36 chaplains strong. We have 10 law enforcement chaplains. We have 26 community chaplains. I have additionally eight chaplains in training right now. I'll explain that in just a few. And we have eight in our academy right now. We currently have, we're about a little over halfway through our community chaplain academy. We expect to have our graduation in the end of May. The way our organization is set up is we have two paid chaplains. My position is paid, my number two, my deputy senior chaplain, is paid, and then we have a part-time office staff that actually runs the show for us. I have to give her kudos. Next slide. Our volunteers must complete a 16-week academy, and then after they graduate, we require them to have 30 hours of boots on the ground, meaning they have to have a total of 30 hours before they can go out. They go out with another chaplain, but they have to have 30 hours in before they are released to go out on their own. Next slide. Next slide. So the chaplaincy has two mission fields, basically. The first mission field is for our law enforcement officers and their families. The second mission field, we found after the law enforcement side was created, was the need to meet community needs. Next slide. So our law enforcement chaplains, as I said, we serve law enforcement officers, their families, the agencies. We do that through attending briefings. We do ride-alongs, work, community events. Law enforcement chaplains are part of the command staff anytime there's a major event. The difference between law enforcement chaplains and community chaplains, your law enforcement chaplains, you'll see in a blue shirt, our community chaplains are in a burgundy shirt. And the main difference is that all of our law enforcement chaplains are either licensed ordained ministers. The big separation in that is because we are clergy and we are chaplains to our law enforcement officers, we hold the right of confidentiality. So when we're in ride-alongs or we're working with law enforcement officers and their families, in this day and age, we can be called to court, but we hold clergy right of confidentiality. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Our community chaplains serve the Placer County community and the citizens. They provide on-scene support when someone's life has ended naturally or through suicide or suspicious circumstances. When law enforcement goes out to a location, we're immediately called out, and we're able to step in and work alongside the family so that it kind of frees up the time of the officers and what they need to do, and it gets them back out on the street quicker, and we're able to provide that longer care for the families. Our law, community chaplains provide death notifications both in county and out of county. So somebody loses their life and they need to contact a family member in county, they contact us, and we make that out-of-county contact for them. Next slide. We participate with every 15 minutes alcohol diversion program with the high schools. In fact, next week, we will be Wednesday and Thursday, I believe, we're at 12 bridges. And then, next slide. We work with the junior high programs, and we will be working First Choice at a junior high next week on Friday. I'm not sure, I just, I can't think which one it is. Next slide. We participate in National Night Out to be a part of our communities and get to know people and get to know the work that we do. And we serve 10 agencies that are listed. Not listed, there would probably be the FBI and Department of Justice. We, like I said, we attend any event that we can and come alongside them and meet whatever needs. You know, as law enforcement chaplains, you know, if we have family members in the hospital, we make sure to visit them and provide whatever service we can for them. Next slide. In 2024, we served over 34,000 hours. We had 326 emergency call-outs that we responded to. In that time, we served over 10,000 citizens in Placer County. We had the honor of serving over 4,000 law enforcement personnel. We were involved in five critical incident debriefings and 35 death notifications. So we had a busy year, and it's continuing, continues to grow for us. Next slide. So with that, as an agency, I just want to introduce who we are for those of you that have not met or have any knowledge of our chaplaincy and would like you guys to know that we serve you as well, and we are always just a phone call away. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for being here. I think that we all have a general understanding of what you do, but this gave us some more specific idea on your roles and the differences between the two chaplains. So we appreciate you being here. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, the next item we have is a proclamation for National Donate Life, the month of April. And Kyla, I think I'll... Good evening. So we have a proclamation here for you, and my colleagues on the council will each take a section of the proclamation. I'll finish it, and then if you want to make a few comments.
Certainly. You can do that.
Yeah, it's an honor. I know someone who just had a transplant late last year and is doing well, so it's an honor to start this off. Whereas 100,000 Americans and nearly 20,000 Californians are currently on the national transplant waiting list, and another person is added to the waiting list every eight minutes, and on average, 17 people die each day while waiting for a life-saving organ transplant.
And?
Whereas Sierra Donor Services serves at the center of a dynamic interconnected system that involves donor families, local hospitals, and transplant centers across Northern California, including the greater Sacramento region, in the delicate and time-sensitive mission of saving lives through transplant. And?
Whereas in 2024, Sierra Donor Services had its second-highest record year after almost four decades, making 912 organ transplants possible thanks to selfless generosity of 170 Northern California organ donor heroes. A total of 426 tissue donors, including musculoskeletal and heart valve donors, contributed to saving and improving lives. Sierra Eye Bank provided 384 corneas from those donor heroes, restoring sight to many people. And?
Whereas organ transplants have directly impacted the lives of Rosehill residents as several transplant recipients live in Rosehill and continue to spread the importance of registering to become an organ, eye, and tissue donor.
Now, therefore, I, Christopher Beresconi, mayor of the City of Roseville, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as National Donate Life Month and encourage all residents to register their decision to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor in the National Donate Life Registry, at donatelife.org or at your local DMV.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Okay, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much for your support, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. My name is Kyla Aquino Irving. I work at Sierra Donor Services, but moreover, I'm proud to be a two-time kidney transplant recipient. My connection to Roseville is that thanks to my organ donor, my kidney donor, I was able to carry a baby at Roseville Kaiser. So he's my little miracle. He'd be here, but he's got a little league game right now, otherwise he would be here with us. I wanted to introduce who I have in the room with me. I've got two other organ transplant recipients, Lauren Meeks-Harris, who I'm sure you all know as a kidney recipient, and Mr. Keith Ivy, who is a heart transplant recipient, almost 15 years out.
It's 15.
15 years out with his heart transplant, and Madam, Ms. Audrey Stout, who is on the other side of our story. She lost a sister who heroically became an organ donor to many people, and I'd love for her to share briefly, if she could. These are folks who live right here in Roseville, so we wanted to make sure we show that story. And I know the Rakucci family has a cornea recipient in their family as well, so we know that, we don't have to look very far for stories about life-saving and improving organ donation, organ, eye, and tissue donation. Audrey, if you don't mind? I'd love for you to share.
Thank you, guys, so much for your time tonight. I'm actually feeling a little emotional tonight. I always do this when I come to see you guys. This means a lot to me, I think. I do a lot of speaking and advocacy through Sierra Donor Services for the cause. My sister passed away 26 years ago, and the impact is still just as profound today as it was back then, even more so in a lot of ways because of the community that I'm a part of and because of the impact that community has had on my healing, on my family's healing, and on caring, sharing my sister's legacy forward. Sharon was 19 years old when she passed away from a tragic accident. She was expected to start school at San Francisco State University to become a teacher, and she had just moved in with her boyfriend of a couple of years. She had her whole life ahead of her, so the tragedy was really hard to accept, but we were able to do so with the guiding support of all of the police officers that were on scene at the accident, the emergency response team, the hospital response team, the OPO response team, to the county and the community that supported all of the resources and everything that went into making her donation possible. And through the choice to donate, she was able to help save the lives or impact the lives of five others through the donation of her liver, kidneys, pancreas, and corneas. And so, much as I've shared with Kyla and everybody else through my speaking engagements, the one thing that stands true over and over again is that myself and my family, my mother, if she could be here tonight, would say the same thing, that we're able to carry forward because we still feel the love and embrace from you guys and our community. And whatever we can do to continue to contribute to that and keep the momentum moving forward, we appreciate your acknowledgement and your support. It goes way beyond the words that I can share tonight. So thank you very, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much again for your support, and I, I hope we can partner with you all to continue to increase the registry and get more lives saved. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyla. Thank you for being here. Okay, we will move on to public comments, and I'd like to ask the clerk to please read those procedures.
You're going to make public comment. Just recognize you do have three minutes, and if anyone would like to come up to the podium, we don't have any cards at this time.
So is there anyone here tonight that would like to make a comment on any item not on the agenda, and now it's time to come forward?
Takes me a little bit to get here, feeling like Iron Man, or I guess I should say Iron Woman. Thank you for your time this evening. It is a pleasure to be here. My name is Mary Hollingsworth, and firstly, I have to say I love Roseville. I'm very proud of this city, and I'm here today to see if the City Council can assist in regards to the weed, or weeds that are growing alongside Fairway and Pleasant Grove and the housing projects where I live. I noticed that there are lots of weeds, and last year this time, I met with someone from Parks and Recs, his name was John, and they said that they were having a problem with the third party to keep the weeds down in our neighborhood. But I think it worked for a little bit, but then it went back to where it was again. So again, I'm very proud of Roseville, and I just want to see it kept up. And I've worked for Hewlett Packard Enterprise, I've worked for HP for almost 35 years, and I bring customers in town, like Amazon, I'll be bringing them in town in a couple of months, and just want the city to look the best. So, go Roseville, and thank you for your time today.
Mary, thank you for your comment. You might want to leave your address with a staff member. In fact, on our agenda tonight is a weed abatement hearing, and I'll be curious to see if it's covered in it, but I know our fire chief's in the back. If you want to give him your address, we can work on it.
I certainly will do that. I have some exhibits ready, but, you know, being into technology for 33 years, I never expect to have a problem with my printer. So, thank you again.
All right, thank you.
Y'all have a good night.
All right, thank you, too. Is there anyone else tonight with a public comment? Now would be your time to come forward, and if you need to escape after a presentation, now would be a good time to.
Hi, good evening, City Council and Mayor. My name is Jennifer Chapman. I'm a resident of Roseville, and I just wanted to share some correspondence that I had earlier, I guess, in the last couple of weeks with some of the staff, and just, just for awareness, it's regarding the tree permit that was approved for 705 Sunrise Avenue, which actually was based on a report that actually isn't complying with the ordinance, with the tree preservation ordinance. And so I'll just kind of recap what the correspondence was, was just to let, to let the city manager, the development services director, and the city attorney know that the city's council's approval of the tree permit for 705 Sunrise Avenue violates the tree preservation ordinance. The arborist report was not done by an ISA-certified arborist. That stands for International Society of Arborists. The person who completed the report is a biologist, not an arborist. The site plan does not meet the requirements in the ordinance for these reasons. All protected trees on the property are not depicted on the site plan map. The site plan map does not show the exact location of the base of the drip line for all location, for all protected trees in the protected, in the project area. Those are the tree protection zones. Basically, yeah, the base and drip line of the protected trees. All those protected trees are the ones that are larger than six inches in diameter at breast height. The exact location of the protected zones are not depicted on the site plan map. And I guess, I guess it's also just that, again, all of the protected trees on that property were not part of the report. On March 25th, I did present the City Council with a photo showing three protected trees that were not evaluated in the report, and I've resent you that photo, maybe even more graphically pointing out which trees those are. And I discussed this with the planning, the planning director in person prior to that date, and he was going to have the project planner look into it, but I'm not sure, I never heard back whether it was looked at. The measurements of the trees that I took, using the calculation formula in the ordinance, were actually different than the dimensions that were taken in the report, and so they were actually, in all three cases, all the three trees identified for removal in the permit, were all measured in the report to be smaller than what I measured, and significantly smaller, you know, like 10 inches in one case, which couldn't have occurred over the year difference between the measurements. So, you know, I've had two retired arborists look at the site, and I guess I'm just saying, this is a concern, that, you know, there's currently a project out for review at Rocky Ridge Apartments with a tree report that is compliant. It's incredibly different, you can see the difference, and so you're not using consistent standards, and I hope it's a concern to you. I've been told that there's nothing that can be done except go to court, and I, I can't believe that there aren't some alternative ways to address this. So thank you for your awareness. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to make a comment on any item that's not on the agenda? Now would be your time to come forward. Okay? If not, closed public comment. We do have one more public comment at the end of our meeting. We'll move on to the consent calendar.
Great, thank you. So all matters on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion of the City Council. There will be no discussion on the consent calendar items unless a member of the City Council, staff, or member of the public requests a specific item be pulled for further discussion. At this time, neither council or staff has made such a request. Is there any member of the public that would like to pull an item from consent for further discussion tonight?
An approval of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Seeing none, Mayor, at this time, the City Council will consider consent calendar items 7.1 through 7.25. We do have a motion on the floor. Can I get a second?
Second.
Can we have a motion with a second? We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Albert. Yes. Councilmember Haldishell.
Yes.
Councilmember Madonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Beresconi.
Yes. Thank you. We'll move on to item 8.1, which is the Local Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee. Hi there.
Good evening, Mayor Beresconi and City Council. My name is Jordan Binnell, and I am the chair of the Local Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee. The Local Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee was created when Roseville voters passed Measure B in the November 6, 2018 election. The committee is charged with the annual review and report to City Council on the revenue and expenditures on the Measures B sales and use tax. As part of Engage Roseville effort that led to Measure B, the city asked the community about its priorities for city services to help guide the city in developing future budgets. These priorities, along with City Council priorities, were reflected in the FY 2023 to 2024 budget as follows. Maintaining essential services, restore services that were reduced prior to the inflammation of Measure B, measure and maintain the fiscal health of the city in investments, such as the city's investment fund, and add additional services such as staffing of the new police force in West Roseville, implementing initiatives to address homelessness in the city, and increase hours in city facilities. The committee met on February 26, 2025, to review essential financial and budgetary data presented to the city, and then again on March 26, 2025, to review the final report prepared by members of our committee. The committee approved the report that you have before you today. The report shows that the committee concludes, based on data provided by city staff and our analysis as described above, police, fire, public works, and parks, recreation, and library services were all maintained as evidenced by an increase in expenditures and committee satisfaction within the city. The committee also concludes the FY 2023 to 2024 Measure B funds were used for their intended purpose. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for me this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for me this evening.
Thank you so much, Jordan. Does the council have any questions of Jordan?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll, thank you for your work on this committee too. Please be sure to convey our acknowledgement to your colleagues there on the committee. I'll open up to public comment. Does anyone want to comment on this item? Okay, closed public comment. It's information only, so we'll move on to the next item, which is 8.2, Roseville Electric Department Budget Update.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilors. I'm Dan Bean, CEO and Director of Your Electric Utility. With me today is Sean Matcham, our Chief Operating Officer, and Joanna Cucci, our recently-promoted Assistant Director over Finance and Customer Care. So, I'm here to walk you through some key highlights from the proposed fiscal year 26 electric department budget. There are several important items to note, and I will begin with the most significant. First, the FY 26 budget reflects a net negative cash flow of $20 million. This is largely driven by a major capital investment, specifically the recent approved project to repower Roseville Power Plant Number Two. This is being done in partnership with the California Department of Water Resources. This is a unique and strategic opportunity that we believe will deliver long-term value to the community. To get this project off the ground, we are planning to use existing cash on hand during FY 26. That is the main reason for the negative $20 million net cash flow. Looking ahead, we expect a potential debt issuance during the fiscal year to reimburse those funds and spread the cost over time. Joanna will be covering more details about this project and related financial considerations later in the presentation. Moving on to the revenue side, we are projecting nearly $230 million in revenue for FY 26. That is the highest revenue budget we've ever had, though it is not surprising, given the recent rate changes. This reflects the full-year impact of our two most recent rate adjustments, a 9% increase in June 2024 and another 9% in January 2025. These adjustments were critical to managing our rising costs and maintaining stability. The good news is that no rate adjustments are needed in FY 26. The proposed budget allows us to maintain all of our key financial metrics in line with adopted policies, so we are in a strong financial position for the coming year. Now, looking further ahead, we continue to see considerable influence from state and federal legislation and regulations. Active engagement in these spaces is still essential to protecting the interests of our customers. Renewable energy markets are also presenting challenges. Costs remain high and at times volatile, depending on the specific product and timing of purchases. The cost containment strategies we have already put in place will help mitigate those impacts. So, we are keeping an eye on the possibility of a rate adjustment in FY 27. While we do not yet have enough information to make a recommendation, we will continue to assess the need and scale of that potential action. We are also evaluating future generation and resource options to ensure reliability and affordability over the long term. And finally, we have several important capital investments planned in FY 26 to support the growing needs of our community. And that concludes the high-level overview. I will now turn it over to Joanna, who will walk you through the financial details and project specifics. Thank you.
Good evening. On the screen right now is a general look at the utility for FY 25, so it's data from the last fiscal year. So, the utility sold approximately 1,200 gigawatt-hours of energy. This is pretty flat. We've been around this amount of energy sold for the last five or six years, so we are maintaining our sales numbers. In addition, we have over 1,000 miles of power lines that we maintain or build. In FY 24, we add on each year as development occurs, but that was the number. Most of that will be underground lines with about 10% overhead. Our typical residential customer paid about 19 cents per KWH in FY 24, and our outage rate is about .2 outages per customer per year, which is about one outage for each customer every five years. So, our customers can expect to see that level of outages, and typically, they are additionally rare and also short. So, so moving on to FY 25, FY 26, Dan talked a lot about what's going on in our budget and how volatile it is this year. We developed this budget in alignment with the City Council's strategic plan, specifically fiscal responsibility and investing in well-planned infrastructure. A lot of our budget this next year is really about developing infrastructure and capital improvements for the future. It positions the electric department to deliver on its mission, which is to support and serve our community in delivering exceptional reliability, customer service, and advocacy. And then finally, it does maintain compliance with our financial policies and metrics. So, what does the electric utility budget cover? So, the budget includes our general electric operations, which is all of our staff and operations in terms of maintaining substations, power lines, the finance team, the management team, all of those groups fall under electric operations. In addition, we have a large capital investment plan for FY 26. We pay the franchise fee to the city, which is 4% of budget. The electric department funds the city's streetlights and traffic signals, and in addition, covers 50% of the customer care costs, 50% of the utility expiration center, and then the utility's share of city IT central services and general support services at the city. So, this is the current and proposed FY 26. Starting with the forecast of FY 25, as you can see, energy sales are a little higher than normal. That was because there was an extremely hot summer last summer, so we did see increased sales in the beginning of the year. Other revenue is increased due to an insurance payment we expect for the CT2 repair work that's being done. We expect some of the insurance money to come back in FY 25, and then some of it in FY 26. Looking at operating expenses, that increases largely that repair of CT2 out at the R E P, so we do see an increase there. On the non-operating revenue side, we see an increase because CDWR will be paying the utility $4 million towards the R P P 2 repower project. So, that $4 million goes to help fund that capital improvement. And then looking at the capital expense, that's really where we're seeing a lot of the increase in FY 25, and that is due to the R P P 2 repower project. We had additional expenses in new services, so new development projects that came in that needed to be done, so that is also in our capital expenses. We did complete 116 Grant Street, and all of those, a number of those were carried forward from previous years, so that's why you see a spend that's higher than the original budget. Moving on to FY 26, as Dan said, this is our highest revenue year due to the rate increases that we saw, so we do expect $228 million in energy sale revenue. Other revenue is slightly higher than typical, and that's due to the remainder of the insurance payment. We do see operating expenses increase. This is largely due to power costs, either generation or purchase power. And then, a lot of, non-operating revenues, as expected, non-operating expenses are typical. But looking down at capital expenses, this is really where we see an increase again. And again, this is a large $26 million that is intended for the R P P 2 repower. So, overall, we're looking at a negative $20 million in cash flow, and as Dan mentioned, we are looking at whether issuing bonds for this fiscal year is financially smart, it's a good move to spread this cost out over the life of a bond versus putting it all on existing customers when it's such a long-term asset. As we mentioned, we do maintain our key financial policies, so our day's cash on hand will remain above 250 at 253 days' cash on hand, and our debt coverage coverage ratio is quite high at 6.15. That debt coverage coverage ratio is another reason we're looking at issuing debt. We aren't carrying a ton of debt at this point because we paid off about $56 million a few years ago, so that debt coverage coverage ratio is really high and allows us some room to discuss issuing debt. So, just a general overview of the utility for FY 25 and 26. This is our expenses, so our operating expenses are the majority of the budget, and this includes purchase power and generation. And then our capital expenses are the top. In FY 25, we expect it to be about $31 million, and in FY 26, $43 million in capital projects. Our largest capital project is that R P P 2 repower at $28 million. I think I said 26 before. I apologize, it's 28. And then, our largest operating item is purchase power. That's always our largest, it's about 60% of our budget typically. So, looking forward at our fiscal risks and challenges, purchase power and natural gas costs are always a difficult item for us to forecast and capture. It is a huge portion of our budget, so any swings in that item can swing our budget substantially. Along with that renewable energy procurement, we were looking at very high renewable energy procurement just a couple of months ago. The prices have come down substantially. Determining when those are going to swing again is part of what our Power Supply Group focuses on to try to get the best price for renewable energy. Natural gas transportation costs, we have a contract with PG&E to lower the natural gas transportation costs, but that is a contract that does end and has to be renegotiated. So, as of right now, it ends in FY 27, and will need to be negotiated going forward, or else our purchase power costs will increase if we're not able to maintain that lower rate. As always, legislative and regulatory actions do impact our budget, depending on where the focus of the legislature is. Honestly, sometimes it's going to be fire, which impacts us, other times it's going to be reliability, which impacts us, other times it's going to be the cost of power, which also impacts us. So, generally, we look at each legislative season and really try to focus on the things that impact the utility. Air Resources Board Regulations, that's basically implementing those legislative and regulatory actions, so the interpretation of those laws and how that impacts us. Largely, that impacts our GHG revenue and resources. Labor Market Adjustments, this year, they were not large, so we are looking at 26, and all of our forecasting held. So, but going forward, that's always a risk in each fiscal year. And then, in general, economic uncertainty, I don't think I have to explain that to anyone right now. It's hard to understand how the current environment will impact the econ, the economy, and how the tariffs impact a lot of the things we purchase, including substations, steel, lots of the items that we purchase do come from outside the United States. So, this is looking kind of at our large projects in the five-year horizon. We've talked multiple times about the $45 million R P P 2 repower that was approved at the last budget, last council meeting. We're also doing $27 million in upgrades to our peak, which is the two generating units at the R E P that came from D W R last year. In the longer term, we're looking at $23 million investment in the Vernon Substation to rehabilitate and add redundancy at that substation. We just began purchases for the $18 million Creekview Substation. A lot of things are really long lead time, so those purchases have just begun for that construction project. And then finally, we're looking at about $14 million in 12 KV switchgear at the foothills and southeast substations. So, those are kind of our large projects over the five-year horizon, but there are little projects also that come underneath those. And that concludes our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Does the council have any questions for staff?
You know, I had one. You're talking about the new generators that are coming in and how, you know, the cost of generators. How much are we saving having the generators and being able to produce energy for ourselves and for others? You know, like, it costs X, but we're looking that it's going to help us with Y.
Sure, yeah. The new project that we keep referring to, the repower project at R P P 2, what we're doing there is we're making our existing generation fleet more efficient, more cost-effective to run. Our initial numbers, estimates, and we looked over a period of time, so over the next 10 years, the most recent numbers that I've seen as savings for us in being more cost-effective is in the $150 million range. And, and that's just one part, that's the market value, to have those, have more efficient units run in place of the older efficient, or older inefficient units. In addition to that $150 million, and that means how we integrate it into our portfolio, in addition to that figure, there's other value that we could achieve by making targeted market sales when, when the market is right, and making our capacity available to other parties when it, when it's excess of what our needs are. So, that's excluding that. And so, when we talked about the repower project previously, the financial feasibility of the project is, is very high for us. It was really, it made a lot of sense for us to move forward on. We're spending $48 million over the next year on those assets, and that's really kind of the order of magnitude on what we see now on the horizon.
No, thank you. Thank you for sharing it with us and the community, because I, I know it sounds like, it is a lot of money, but how much more benefit that the city of Roseville and actually California is going to have because we have it is, needs to be said a lot.
Right, and I'll just add a little more, the, the value of the asset for us, also maintaining reliability, knowing that certainty that we have these assets in our backyard to our, connected to our system, and now we also have that certainty that we can count on them to serve the community when we need in the summer. So, in addition to the financial value that I just mentioned, the, just the contingency planning of having newer assets on our system to serve the community is also valuable.
One thing I was just thinking too, the cost of electricity is really goes up, especially when you have to trans, use the transmission lines, and having it in our, in our backyard, in our yard, is going to make a, a big difference.
Yeah, and I'll just add a little more to that. That's been a, a big part of our integrated resource plan that we, we, we've done, we completed about a year and a half ago now. There was a desire and a strategic focus to place emphasis on our internal generation for that exact reason, to avoid some of the transmission costs that would be otherwise associated with buying elsewhere or delivering here to Roseville. It also eliminates a, a big thing for us that doesn't get a lot of publicity, but the general market risk and volatility that comes to buying elsewhere geographically, and the way that the California markets work, there's, there's market risk to that. And so, by having resources located geographically closer to Roseville, and then specifically connected to our distribution system, avoids those market risks as well. So, all the way around, if we can focus on making our internal generation better or adding to it, we say internal, internal to our distribution system, it really speaks volume to our ability to manage cost and, and maintain reliability locally.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to pick up on Councilwoman Rakucci's questions and, and put this in the right context. We're not the only public utility facing these challenges, correct?
Absolutely not. Every public utility is facing these same challenges. Honestly, the entire California and Western market is seeing the same issues. Rate increases, cost increases are basically across the board. It's a large topic of conversation at every industry event that we're attending, is how people are managing the cost increases and challenges.
And I think as Councilwoman Rakucci was trying to draw out, reliability is a value, and you, you balance out the cost versus the value, and certainly reliability is a great value here. So, the natural gas transportation costs, are we doing that in partnership with anyone?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll say, so, the whole, Joanna mentioned that we have a, a contract with PG&E for that service. So, that contract is negotiated with a group of other Northern California utilities, and also high customer, industrial customers of PG&E from the natural gas perspective. So, we're not in it alone. It's not just Roseville Electric going and negotiating against PG&E. We do benefit from the joint action on that item.
And I, I guess I was probably thinking of a SECOG item where we do fleet, we buy fuel through, through a fleet. I'm getting a nod from our CFO, so just note that down that I do remember something from your presentations. You know, and then the credit market is tricky, right? When I served on the South Placer Waste Management Authority, rates were really low, and they caught it. They caught it just at the right time. Do we have a deadline in which we need to go to market and things like that?
So, we just started looking at this item, but we have started talking with our financial advisors, and generally, January is a good month for issuing debt, so that's currently the thought on updating our OS and hitting release then, but we'll follow the advice of our financial advisors and bond counsel when it comes down to the actual date.
And the last question is, we have a Risk Oversight Committee, and it meets Monday. Will there be a deeper dive on this at that meeting, or is that just on the water utility?
So, the Risk Oversight Committee is just the electric utility, so there is some discussion on some of the contracts and risks, pieces of things, and then I believe renewable energy is the large
is the large topic that's at that.
Great, thank you, Mayor.
Anything else? Okay, open up to public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this item? Now would be your time to come forward. Okay, we'll close public comment. This is information only. We appreciate you providing us with this information.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Joanna.
All right.
Okay, the next item before us will be a budget update from our Environmental Utilities Department. Again, this is information only. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sean Bigley, I'm your Environmental Utilities Director, and it's my pleasure tonight to give an overview of our proposed FY '26 budget for Environmental Utilities. And so what I want to do is just really briefly provide an overview of the budget, just to start off. But before I do that, I want to introduce Shane Whittington. Shane's actually our EU Business Services Manager, so we're going to do a little tag team here on the presentation tonight, and we'll give you a little bit more detail. So with that, just really quickly, in terms of the approach to the budget, again, we're really focused in on maintaining a high level of utility service within Environmental Utilities at a reasonable and competitive cost. And we'll show some of the numbers that kind of demonstrate that over time. We're also focused on maintaining our infrastructure assets. We have a lot of assets that are in the ground, above ground, and we need to make sure that we commit the resources to maintain those assets kind of going forward into the future. We're also focused on long-term water supply reliability, maintaining and keeping up with the needs as far as wastewater treatment capacity, and also a focus on waste services that are basically keep pace with the mandate specifically at the state level. Again, like Roseville Electric, we're subject to many unfunded state and federal mandates, which do continue to be a pressure for budgets in general, as well as the impacts of inflation over time. This, in my view, this proposed budget provides a reasonable resources to maintain excellent utility services by Environmental Utilities and at a reasonable price. And then I'll just say, in the presentation, I want to say that we're going to briefly touch on the proposed rate case that's currently in the process of public, in the public outreach phase. So we'll talk briefly about that. We will be presenting ultimately that proposed rate case in May to City Council. So, and with that, I'll go ahead and transition in terms of just an overview. Again, everything that we're focused in on in Environmental Utilities is in alignment with the council's strategic plan. So I just want to kind of go through a few statistics that demonstrate that. So first, in the realm of remaining fiscally responsible in a changing world, we're looking for outside funding opportunities that make sense relative to what we need to get done in Environmental Utilities. So right now, we have about $37.6 million in grant funding that's, has been acquired or is in the process of being acquired. There's about $29 million of that that we're expecting or anticipating through the Inflation Reduction Act. And then the remaining amount of funds are generally state funds. We have about $8 million from the California Natural Resources Agency. That is a grant to help fund our ASR well projects. It was an item on council tonight, as well as the remaining balance that is from CalRecycle, which focuses on waste services. In terms of investing in a well-planned infrastructure and growth, through efforts, working with Bureau of Reclamation as well as Placer County Water Agency, we're able to secure 76,000 acre feet of annual water supply. This is via contracts that we have in place that allow us to have a secure water supply into the future to meet current demands as well as future growth demands going forward. In terms of also investing in well-planned infrastructure and growth, we provide about $1.2 billion gallons annually of recycled water, primarily to the western portion of the city. And then finally, in terms of supporting community engagement advocacy, we have our Utility Exploration Center, which I know each of you have been to, probably multiple times. And a neat statistic is we see about 6,300 students visit the Exploration Center annually. So really kind of paying forward into the future in terms of educating folks, in terms of the importance of using resources efficiently. So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and transition over to Shane, and he'll take it from there.
Thank you, Sean. I think bottom line for this next fiscal year, we are looking at negative net cash flow, and I want to emphasize that that's not a trend, but more related to a larger-than-typical capital project budget. And really, what I like to liken this to is homeowner replacing their roof. So they'll see a spike, and we'll see a spike in the expenses that we're anticipating in that, in this fiscal year, but over a 10, or 20, or 30-year period, what we're really looking to try to do is provide services at cost. So negative net cash flow this year, and there will be some years when we actually have a surplus, but on net, we're looking to provide services at cost. And to try to highlight that a little bit, I actually have two slides. So first, I have the revenue slide, which demonstrates kind of the predictability of our revenues, which is mostly due to the proportion of our revenues that are funded by rates. So greater than 80, or about 80% of our revenues are rate-funded. And that's what allows us to be very consistent on the revenue side. But on the expenditure side, what you'll see is pretty volatile spending in capital expenses. So while our operating expenses are pretty predictable, our capital expenses can go up and down given, depending on the given year and what projects we need to deliver. Switching gears to talk about rates a little bit more, like Sean mentioned, we are in a rate-setting year, and we go through this process every two years. And the intention with that is to allow us to be a little bit more nimble and react to price fluctuations a little bit more nimbly, but, and not have to, I guess, some agencies will do it over five years, and we don't want to over-correct doing it for five years, and that's why we do it every two years. What we're looking at in the next fiscal year is about a 3% to 4% increase for the average residential customer, and then a similar increase in fiscal year '27. And then I included this slide, which shows the regional average comparison. So the dark blue bar is what we are currently charging for the average residential customer. That blue gray bar in the middle is what we're proposing by utility. And then that blue bar to the right there is the regional average. And really, the only reason for including this slide is to demonstrate that we're still very, very competitive compared to our neighbors. And then from here, I'll turn it back to Sean to demonstrate what revenues really pay for and how it leads to better services for the community.
Yeah, so just really quickly, I'll go through the three utilities within Environmental Utilities. First, our water utility, just a little bit in terms of what we do in terms of the water treatment process. It's about $10.1 billion gallons of water treated. That's at the Barton Road Water Treatment Plan out at Granite Bay. And so that's obviously a key service that provides drinking water to the community of Roseville. With that, once that water is treated, we actually transmit that water through our water distribution system. So there's about 715 miles of water main that has to be maintained over time. We do that through doing assessments periodically to understand where those mains that have potential likelihood of failure and what that consequence of failure is, and figuring out and prioritizing what maintenance needs to occur within the water distribution system to ensure that folks have reliable water service as feasible as possible. In terms of just the cost of water, the cost of water relatively speaking is inexpensive, and that's benefit of having some very good water supply contracts in place between the Bureau of Reclamation. We've had that relationship with them in terms of water service contracts since 1971. The water is actually relatively inexpensive. Similarly, with Placer County Water Agency, we've had a longstanding relationship with them, which has afforded us to have water supplies coming from their Middle Fork Project that's also relatively inexpensive. So in this slide, it's about a half a cent per gallon of water that comes from your faucet in comparison to about $1.29 a gallon for bottled retail water that you can go buy at Safeway or whatever store you can name. All right, moving on to the wastewater utility. So in terms of the two regional wastewater treatment plans, one at Pleasant Grove and the other at Dry Creek, we treat 7.3 billion gallons of wastewater annually. Similarly, we have to maintain a sewer collection system that consists of 900 miles of sewer infrastructure, lift stations, and a whole variety of other types of infrastructure within that system. And with that, we did a calculation that notes it's about three cents a flush to be able to flush your toilet, and, you know, out of sight, out of mind, right, in terms of the typical residential customer. And in comparison, sort of anecdotally, about $2 per use for a portable toilet that you can rent. So. Regarding waste services, we basically collect about 268 million pounds of trash annually. That consists in terms of a number of curbside pickups for all of our customers. That's about 4.2 million pickups per year. The cost of that is about $8.57 per pickup for the typical residential customer. If a customer was going to self-haul to the Western Placer Waste Management Authority, on average, it would cost them about $44 to self-haul. So it's a really relatively good value in terms of the service we provide from waste services to the Roseville community. So in terms of just the budget, again, this is a reasonable budget. It's very consistent with how we've budgeted over many years based on very sound fiscal policies that have been established by City Council. And with that, we'll close out and ask if you have any questions of us.
Thank you for that. Does Council have any questions for staff?
Just a silly comment. I've never heard anybody say how much it costs to flush a toilet. I'm going to go home, three cents a flush. I've heard the bottled water forever, but that, you've topped the mark.
Worth every penny, okay.
Please.
Make a public comment. Okay, I'll close public comment. Thank you for the information. This is information only, so we will not be voting. Was this your first presentation to council? Second? Okay, great job, thank you.
And no relation to the other Whittington, right?
Correct.
Okay, the next item is a public hearing, adoption of schedule of maintenance costs and charges for the Community Facilities District. I'll open the public hearing, and we'll have a presentation.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Bernasconi, council members. My name is Scott Pettengill, City's Finance Director, and tonight's item is an update to the schedule of maintenance costs and charges for maintenance CFDs, or Community Facilities Districts. And this item is part of our regular biennial process that is based on a detailed cost analysis that is conducted by a consultant. In off-years, when a study isn't performed, the schedule is updated using a standard construction cost index to account for inflationary costs. So the overall goal of this schedule is to establish a uniform set of costs that ensure the city can adequately and proportionally recover the expenses associated with operating, maintaining, and administrating services within our maintenance CFDs, all in a manner that is transparent, efficient, and consistently applied. In terms of some background, on March of 2019, the City Council approved the adoption of a master schedule of maintenance costs and charges, following outreach and coordination with the Building Industry Association on the proposed policy and process. This schedule established the annual maintenance costs for services provided to maintenance CFDs throughout the city. And as I mentioned earlier, a full cost recovery study is conducted every other year to ensure the schedule accurately reflects actual service costs and to correct for any inefficiencies. And then in the interim years, when a full study isn't performed, the rates in the schedule are adjusted using the October CPI or Consumer Price Index. Once a district is formed or annexed, its rates are escalated annually using the inflator that's specified in that district's rate and method of apportionment, or RMA. And in terms of a bit of context, a maintenance CFD is established to cover the ongoing costs of maintaining public improvements within the district's boundaries, and that includes things like park maintenance, preserve and open space maintenance, streetscape maintenance, and stormwater management. Maintenance CFDs are sometimes referred to as services CFDs or non-bonded Melrose districts, because unlike traditional CFDs, they're not used to finance infrastructure. They're focused solely on funding ongoing maintenance and services in that district. So this schedule serves as a uniform cost recovery system for maintenance CFDs across the entire city. It's intended to be used for all new CFD formations, as well as annexations into existing maintenance CFDs. The cost values in the current report are appropriate for the upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year '26, and reflect a full cost recovery analysis. Going forward, continuing to use the schedule require annual inflationary adjustments and PRA reviews to make sure that we are at full cost recovery. The values included in the schedule being proposed this evening are designed to bring the city back to 100% cost recovery from the current rate of between 90% to 98%. And without these adjustments for full cost recovery, maintenance costs would have to be reduced or be funded by the general fund. So to conclude, our recommendation this evening is to approve a resolution adopting the updated schedule of maintenance costs and charges for the city's CFDs. And with that, I will conclude my presentation, and we're available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, great, thank you. Does Council have any questions for Scott before we go to public comment?
I have one. Scott, remind me, does that include sound walls, you know, like areas that maybe they've been there for 20, 30, 50, not the new sound walls, but you know?
It does, includes sound walls as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone like to make a comment on this item? I'll close public comment. This is information only.
Close public hearing.
Close public hearing, thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, I believe this is an action item, that is correct.
We do have one.
Is that what's your last slide?
Yes, thank you.
On item 9.1, the City Council will consider adopting Resolution Number 25-087, adopting a schedule of maintenance costs and charges for Community Facilities District. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Albert, Councilmember Haldeschel, Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Okay, the next item is 9.2, Compliance with Assembly Bill 2561, Government Code Section 3502.3, Regarding Vacancies and Recruitment and Retention Efforts. It's a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. And welcome, Stacy.
Good evening, Mayor Bernasconi, council members. I'm Stacy Peterson, Human Resources Director for the city, and I'm very pleased to have a chance to highlight some of the great work that my staff do as a result of this new law. AB 2561 was, became effective on January 1 of this year, and it requires all public agencies to provide a presentation on the status of their vacancies, especially for those agencies who have 20% or higher vacancy rates. I have to tell you just from the start that we're doing a great job in Roseville, and if we can go to the next slide. This is just giving you a little bit of workforce information. As of, we're going to be reporting on 2024, so calendar year 2024. We started the year with 1,366.85 positions, and we ended the year with 1,390.1 positions. I want to clarify that this is just reporting on regular positions. So these are our regular benefited classified positions under the personnel rules. This is not including all of our temporary positions, so at any given time, we have between 300 to 600 temporary or seasonal positions also serving the public in Roseville. And just listed the 15 departments that all of those positions are allocated across. Certainly, Environmental Utilities, the Police Department, and Electric Utility, those are our largest departments, so create a lot of the recruitment workload. So overall, our citywide vacancy rate is only 7%, which is doing exceptional compared to other agencies across the state. On average, I typically state we have about 100 vacancies at any given time throughout the year. You can see in the table at the top that it ranges, you know, starts at 106 and goes all the way through to December to 96.5. You can see a little blip in January where we have an 8% vacancy rate, because we have typically retirements happen in December. So it goes up, and then you can see in July, we have a little blip up because we have our budget process that is adopted in June, and we typically have positions added. So we're doing very well with our highest vacancy rate at the end of any of the given months at 8%, and our lowest is at 6%. We also are required to report We also are required to report on our labor groups. And through this new law, the labor groups have a right to be able to come and present to council. This evening, we don't have any of our labor groups here wishing to present, partly, I think, because we're doing very well. You can see, we did have with the Roseville Police Association, which is our non-sworn professional group in the police department, we had a little bit of a higher percentage. And in part, that's due to the fact that at the latter part of 2023, we had six retirements. And so they worked really quickly to get those positions filled. By the end of 2024, they were back down to a 6% vacancy rate. Really quickly, we wanted to highlight our recruitment process, partly for the public, but also for you to understand that when we open a full recruitment, once we have a vacancy that is submitted by the department, then there's typically some sort of a testing process, whether that be a written exam, or physical agility testing, or a formula-rated exam where we evaluate a candidate's qualifications, like their education, their experience, certifications, licenses, or it may entail an interview panel. That helps us develop some sort of a score so we can create an eligible list of candidates that are qualified for the positions we're trying to fill. So all of our classified positions require that they be selected from an eligible list that has determined that they're qualified. And we send that eligible list to the departments. And then the departments from there do their own process, whether it involve an interview panel. They also may include physical agility testing or some other sort of testing to get those specialized skills, like in our utilities, there's often very specialized skills they need to test for. And once the top candidate is selected, a contingent offer is made, and then there's a background process that we have to go through. And once the candidate clears the background process, then we do a formal offer, set a start date. And that's the period of time that we're required to evaluate from the start of the job posting to when that formal offer is provided. So to give you some of our recruitment statistics, we filled a total of 202 vacancies. Now, again, this is just regular positions. A lot more temporary positions were filled during the process, too. On average, are the number of days, and this is calendar days, to fill vacancies was 96, so about three months. That may seem long, but I will tell you, our peers, because we're able to tell in our new applicant tracking system, our peers are running on average at five months. And I will say, for the most part, departments move very fast here. We do have the challenge of some of our vacancies or positions being very specialized. And sometimes we do have to recruit two or three times to find a really well-qualified candidate for that position. We don't settle. We want to find the best qualified candidates that we can. Our last recruitment for HR, we were able to complete the recruitment from start to finish in one month. So depending on if the department is able to really structure that timeline for the recruitment, they can move faster as they need to. So we shared a little more information about the number of requisitions filled. And this goes much faster when we have an existing eligible list of candidates because that initial process doesn't have to happen again. So we were able to fill 51 of our requisitions this past year through existing lists. We opened 87 new recruitments, and so that had to go through the full process. And then we did 49 promotional-only recruitments. So those were only for internal city employees. I will share just some current data because this has all been 2024. We do currently have 30 offers right now in progress. We have nine new hires that are starting this week, and there are 28 recruitments open. So I like to share for the public, please take a look at what we do currently have open and are recruiting for because there's a lot of opportunities for the community. As part of this new law, we're supposed to evaluate what are our current challenges and some of the things that we are doing. Now, in particular, this is for those agencies that are struggling, but we wanted to share a few of those with you just to give you some insights into what we're looking at. And I will say that we are on an ongoing basis. This isn't because we all of a sudden have a spike in vacancies. We are always troubleshooting what is going to help us fill our vacancies so that we can continue to support departments. We looked at some of the obstacles recently, being lengthy pre-employment background processes, needing more follow-up communication with applicants, and then certainly, our job postings have not been applicant-friendly. So in addressing that, I want to talk through the solutions. Because as we ran into some of the lengthy pre-employment backgrounds, it's in particular for our custodians and our IT staff who have to go into the police department. They have to go through that full police department background. And by law, we're required, when we do pre-employment backgrounds, to run them sequentially. So we can't, each process has to be completed before the next step can be done. And we figured out a way to run them concurrent because the PB background takes so much longer than a medical, for example. And so we are doing strategies where we can still comply with the law, but move things along faster. When we realized that through our old applicant tracking system, a lot of times, at the point where departments made a formal offer, they were not always following through on that candidate communication at the end. We can now see that in our new system. So we are ensuring when the departments have finalized that recruitment, that we're reaching out to those candidates or we're having departments make sure they do, so that candidates don't lose interest in coming back for future recruitments. Because oftentimes, if they feel we're not communicating, then they move on to looking at other employment. We have also taken a lot of effort to rebrand how we're presenting ourselves to our applicants and to the community so that all of the individuals that are looking for jobs through us can see that we are an employer of choice. They, we have really collaborated with our communications experts through our Public Affairs and Communications Department and all of the communications staff in the departments to figure out how to communicate these different job postings in a way that they're going to be heard by the different candidate pools. So I think that's been part of our success and wanted to share that with you all. And lastly, we're, just wanted to share a little bit about our retention information because, you know, the number of vacancies we have, it's a constant-moving target. Some of the vacancies exist because we're creating new budgeted positions, as I shared earlier, by internal promotions. We actually had 7% by internal promotions. Now, I do want to clarify, I gave you a different number earlier about promotional-only exams. This is different. This means last year, we had 96 promotions because people in our organization competed in open recruitments and they still were selected. So that's why the number is higher. We had 96 actual promotions. And then we did have one employee who went from a benefited position down to a temporary position. And then, as I shared earlier, certainly turnover happens because we have retirements. We had 43% of our vacancies last year because of retirements. There were 42 of them. We had nine involuntary separations, and that had to do with our probationary releases or for-cause releases. And then we had 46 voluntary resignations. So overall, I just wanted to say that we've done a really great job, I think, at the city of continuing to look for great talent and filling positions as they become vacant. We have a steady workforce overall. By these numbers, you can tell that our turnover is not high. It's only about 7%. And we've put in place some great strategies to address the challenges that we've been seeing. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Stacy. Any questions of Stacy?
Very thorough, thank you.
Just that I'd love to get the PowerPoint if I, if you gave it to us and I misplaced it, let me know.
Nope, we will definitely make sure.
It's a lot of data and it's important data, so thank you.
Okay, open up to public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to this item? And now I'll close public comment. And this is information only. Yes? And I'll close the public hearing. Thank you. No further actions required. Thank you. All right, and then our last public hearing for the evening is a weed abatement. We have our fire chief here with us. I'd like to open the public hearing and turn the presentation over to you.
Well, thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I am Ryan Harrigan, your fire chief. As you mentioned, we have one final item for you this evening. Joining me tonight is Division Chief Michael Bradley, who's our fire marshal, and Natural Resources Specialist Colleen Rhodes from our Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Department. And they will make the presentation on our annual weed abatement efforts.
Good evening. Can I get the next slide, please? So each year, the fire department, in partnership with Natural Resources Division of Park, Rec, and Library, we perform annual weed abatements in an effort to reduce the and manage the annual growth of weeds to reduce the risk of wildfire in our city. Next slide, please. Annually, the fire department identifies vacant undeveloped parcels and notifies the property owners to abate the weeds on their property. Fire Department and Parks and Natural Resource Division, a PRL, prioritize and plan the abatement process throughout the city. Just looking at basically where our risk, trying to tackle our highest-risk areas first is, is what we're looking for there. This year, the goal is to have all the weeds abated by July 1st. That's prior to 4th of July. We try and take into account annual rainfall, and we make every attempt to try to time this with the abatement of the weeds with dying seasonal grasses so that we don't ask a property owner to have to abate their weeds twice. The priority is 30-foot fire breaks around city-owned and private vacant parcels. And next slide.
So the Parks, Recreation, and Libraries utilize city staff, contractors, and our four-legged friends, the goats, to manage vegetation and thatch. The goats usually begin in May and continue through October. They could be found through the goat tracker on the city website.
And with that, that concludes our presentation. We're happy to take any questions.
My question, why is your presentation so short?
Just recognizing how long some of these meetings can be.
How does, how does that compare this year or last year and the year before? Do you have more or less weed abatement issues that you have to take care of? Or how does, how are things look that compare?
We do, and as, certainly as the city grows, and it kind of ebbs and flows because some of the larger vacant parcels that start to get developed become, you know, you know, city buildings, commercial buildings, residential, and so we'll lose a little bit of ground there. But then, you know, as the city either gets annexed as additional properties or as additional properties, you know, come into our, into our city, we partner with Parks, Recreation, and Libraries. We'll take the, take usually once at the beginning of the year, probably in January. We usually drive throughout the city and take into account where we see the growth that needs to, where there's a growth of brush and grass that we need to prioritize. And so we'll kind of schedule out and prioritize the weed abatement in that manner.
And then you talk to, you call some of these people up and see if they want to take care of it themselves? And then if they don't, then you will take care of it and they'll be billed?
Yes. Yeah, we have very good compliance with that process. We very infrequently have to go through that process. Most of the time, by the time we notify them and let them know what they're going to incur as a cost of it, they, they take care of it themselves.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Well, you can see that this is a concern of our community every year, and we heard that this, this evening. Okay, I'll open up to public comment. Is there anyone that'd like to speak to this item? We have one. Hello.
Hi, Lauren Meeks-Harris, for the record. I live in central Roseville. My question, and I know I'm supposed to direct the council here. My particular question is dealing with, are you going by neighborhood? Is the abatement team only sticking to rural areas? From my observation, I'm sorry, I'm holding the mic here. It feels like it's slipping from this angle. But my question generally is, is it only for the rural parts of Roseville? Because there's some areas in my neighborhood, and I would love for somebody to maybe directly contact. Not necessarily me, but maybe somebody in my neighborhood area.
The answer to that is, I think it's citywide. But Mike, do you want to speak to that item?
It is, it is citywide. And certainly after this, I'd love to take your information and, and take a look at the area that you're talking about. But we, we do abatement citywide, depending on any open space, the priority, certainly, and, and what we're able to touch by our municipal code is anything that's viewable, either in open space that we own or those that are viewable from the city street. So if it's like a neighbor's backyard, for example, that's something that we don't have the authority to touch, it's got to be viewable from the city street.
Okay, that's good clarity. So that means you also do urban areas as well? It's not? Okay. I'm more familiar with the counties, just because of, that's all. But anyway, thank you so much for the information.
Thank you. How does reporting any concerns interact with MyRoseville app? Could residents report something there that they see or would want the city to check out? Those would be funneled to you? Okay.
They certainly can. They will be routed to us. We have somebody within our Fire and Life Safety Division who specifically, their special project is annual weed abatement. And so it gets routed directly to her and in, and us to prioritize. And we work with Parks, Recreation, and Libraries depending on which area of town it is where we're either going to use, you know, contractors or the goats or city staff.
Okay, would you encourage residents to use that, to report weeds?
Certainly, they can, yes. Yeah, they can do that. They can, you know, either email us or they can phone call into the fire department. Either way, we'll, we'll get it and we'll keep track of it and make sure that it gets done.
Great, okay. Any other questions?
Just had to follow a question to the MyRoseville app. So if they contact through the app, does that resident get contacted by someone at the city that, you know, to let them know what, what action we may be taking?
Yeah, we always try to close the loop. That way, they know that, that we did take it seriously and we remediated it or at least got back to them with, with their concern.
Okay, and then a lot of new development out on the west side? If it's developers' land, then you work with the developer or the landowner to make sure that they're doing their weed abatement?
We do, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize, Madam Mayor, if you did it. I didn't catch the closing of the public hearing.
I haven't yet. Okay, I, I did the public comment. I closed public comment. I'm going to close public hearing and ask our court to read the motion.
Thank you. On item 9.3, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 25-086, ordering the destruction or removal of all weeds, dirt, rubbish, and/or rank growth within the city of Roseville and overruling any and all objections thereto. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Albert, Councilmember Haldishell, Councilmember Mendoza, Councilmember Kuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes, thank you. Okay, and our last public comment tonight, is there anyone here that would like to make a comment on any item that's on the agenda? Public comment and see if our city attorney or city manager have any comments this evening?
Nothing further, Mayor, thank you. Nothing from me either, thank you.
Great, and does anyone want to kick us off with any council comments? In any order?
Hey, I'll, I'll just start it. This is something we all did. So this is, we went to the rededication of Weber Park. And it's Park and Rec and Library Commissioners did, many, many neighbors did. It was just really nice to rededicate the park. And for me, it was to stand in the middle or in the Kings Court, the basketball court, and see Main Street. Because so many people would say they drive on Main Street and could never see the park. And this way, I drove, I drive by that frequently. It's close to my, my neighbor, it's, it's in my neighborhood. And just even driving to come to this meeting today, seeing several girls playing, kind of looked like a cross between Batminton and a couple other ballgames, but they were, seemed to have a lot of fun out there. And so that was the whole goal, is that it's, it's safe, it's accessible for all ages. And with the help of the city of Roseville, it was Kaiser, the Kings, and, and, and a health group. I forgot their name, if you guys.
Health Education Council.
Okay, yes. And so that helped put the basketball court in place. But it was, it was very nice. It's what, we can see what can happen when we all work together. And, and we have, we don't have quite 90 parks yet, but we're really close to it. And seeing Weber Park get kind of shine and be glowing and in that neighborhood is make not only neighbors happy, but I, when my children were little, it was fun to take them to different parks. Obviously, there weren't as many as almost 90, but you can take your children to many different parks and see many different things. And that's a, a real advantage we have here in Roseville.
No comments, Mayor.
Okay. Any from this end?
Just, just a couple of things. And I think several of us were there since our last meeting, the Tommy Apostolus Annual Dinner took place. Tracy, you want to take over from here?
No, we're all going, yeah, we forgot.
Got that, right? I had to look it up. So that's obviously a great community event. event, and then I had an opportunity to talk to, the library has a teen advisory board, and they had a career fair, so had an opportunity to talk to them. And then, I think the last thing I want to say on our agenda tonight was a proclamation recognizing public service to, and, and municipal contribution of government employees. I chair the Capitol Court of Joint Powers Authority, we had that meeting earlier today. The responsiveness of, of our folks here, and the boards and commissions that we serve on is incredible. They, they know what we might ask, what the community might ask, and they're prepared, and, you know, there seems to be no more appropriate time to recognize, you know, the professionalism and the community spirit of our, of our government employees, so I just want to recognize that.
I would echo that, Bruce, thank you for, for that, that note, we're very fortunate to have such amazing city staffs, and we appreciate that, and I think our residents recognize and appreciate that also. And Weber Park is not in my neighborhood, I was doing the math as we were all out there, and I think it was 25 years ago that our oldest son was a counselor in training during one of our summer camps there, and it was just really exciting to see over the past months, as it's kind of come down to street level, just to see the community come together, and it became an asset for our community again. And, and I think it shows the investment in not just the newer, you know, we're growing, and we have a lot of new parks going in, and it's nice to see the city's investment, and that's a long-time investment to come to fruition, to see that investment in some of our older parks as well.
Agreed, agreed, and I also want to acknowledge our Park, Recreation, Library Director here tonight, and it all happened under Jill's watch, too, so, yes, yes, so, congratulations. I would say the most notable event over the last couple weeks to share is, you all know that there was a team from Roseville that was in Washington DC last week for the, an advocacy trip that is highly focused on Roseville issues, only transportation, utilities, we met, I think, I would say between the group, probably 15 to 20 meetings, although there were times that we split up, but meetings from the Department of Transportation, talking about the Andorra Crossing, to meeting at Veterans Affairs Office regarding veterans, more veteran vouchers. So we really covered a lot of ground, and I think it was very impactful. I know that you will all be in DC in a couple weeks, which means that we will not have our first meeting in May, we will reconvene back here in more than a month, I think that's probably the longest that we've gone. So May 21st is our next meeting, and I will adjourn us till then, thank you.